Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, or ladies and gentlemen. Let's call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, March 5th. Let's begin as we always do with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. Let's see, our usual housekeeping items, there's six of us here, so everybody that's an alternate is in as a voting member. Let me begin by reminding everyone to make sure the microphone's turned on and you speak clearly into them so the folks at home can hear you. Please also identify yourself for the record so that the effort to collect minutes accurately reflects that. Our next meeting after today is March 19th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. And with that, I believe that kind of wraps up all of the housekeeping items that we begin with. Item two on our agenda is our consent agenda, which has three items on it. Does anybody want to add or remove anything from the consent agenda item? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Also a motion?
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero for the consent agenda. Okay. Item three on our agenda is Armada Realty LLC is the applicant and owner. And we're here for review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan involving the consolidation of two lots into a single parcel, raising of an existing single-family dwelling and construction of a proposed restaurant building with a drive-through along with associated site improvements. The parcels are located at 632 and 634 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial, Oqfer Conservation, and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts and the Whalehead Protection Area. It's tax map 6E-2, lot 6 and 7, and it's Case Planning Board 2024-6. Casey, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Not much, I just wanted to point out that this is the site of the Hot Rise Restaurant and that they went before the zoning board back in August to get a special exception to allow this use in the C1 district.
Excellent. Restaurants aren't allowed in the C1 without a special exception? Oh, drive-through, gotcha. Alright. Matt, good to see you again. Please introduce yourself and your client and then tell us where we're at.
Good evening, my name is Matt Peterson with Keach Norsham Associates here representing proposed non-residential site plan for the new Hot Rise Restaurant Building in front of the board tonight at 632 and 634 DW Highway.
William Heng from Armada Realty. I'm the applicant for 632, 634 Daniel Webster Highway.
He's also the owner of Hot Rise, just so everybody knows.
One of my favorite coffee shops.
Apparently a lot of people in town, from Steve who was there this morning and the place was packed at nine o'clock.
Yeah, it is, and I'm actually kind of excited about the proposal that you got here because occasionally there's a few cars backed up that struggle to get in there and it'll certainly help with that. So anyway, tell us where we're at with the details.
So again, just an overall, applicant is currently located at 634, as you know, Daniel Webster Highway. Has been in Merrimack for about twenty?
Twenty years.
On here.
It's on, bring it a little closer, see if that door works better.
Sorry.
It sounds like it's working better now.
Okay, there we go. So he's been in business for about 20 years now and been a good business in town. It seems to be a lot of people, as I keep hearing at zoning board and planning boards, like the place. As such, business grown and progressed to this morning type of restaurant like Hot Rise. We've faced some changes the last few years and he'd like to try to take advantage of. Again, he purchased a property next to him to do it, but he'd like to take advantage of trying to add a drive-through at this location. As we know, traffic in this area backs up and stuff like that at times. The drive-through would allow a little bit more uniformity coming in and out. It actually does kind of help your traffic when you do put in the drive-through. We just lost the Superior Court case in Manchester, we're trying to put a drive-through in. They denied it and all the traffic numbers show the drive-through would have actually reduced it slightly. So instead of people parking at certain places and having to walk around. But the existing additions plan is made up of two lots. We purchased the residential house just to the south here, that is about 0.516 acres. That has two curb cuts out on Daniel Webster Highway right now. One of them is kind of directly across from the town road out there now. And then the second parcel is what I call the Hot Rise parcel. That is 1.078 acres. So when we combine the two lots here, we'd have a 1.587 acre parcel. We thought about keeping them separate and trying to do this as separate lots, but it really, the setbacks in the middle here just really kind of put, and then the 60-foot in the back here puts kind of a big hamper on the littler parcel. So it makes a lot of sense to combine them to do what he'd like to do out here today. As was stated by staff, we were granted a special exception to allow the drive-through facility in the C1 district. Just so the board has an understanding of the district here. This here is a zoning map. We are sit right about here is the Hot Rise building. The house is right here in the lower corner and you can notice that pretty much everything around us is C1. So we don't have any residential zones, industrial zones and that kind of stuff around us. The plan set that we pushed together here, very similar to what you've seen from our office here, the second plan set here is the removals and demolition. This shows removal of those curb cuts that I talked about for the residential house, removal of the house, the patios, all the stuff that's incorporated with it, as well as pavement around the existing Hot Rise. To make all the drainage and grading and work on the site, we've had to kind of utilize more than we wanted to. There's existing leech and catch basins out there. We've come to this board, they work in some locations, as this has kind of grown to a full site plan, it just makes sense to take an overall drainage look at this. This does not require AOT approval, it does require a DOT approval from the state, but at only 1.5 acres in size, it just doesn't hit their threshold for an AOT permit. So this just demo plan, pretty straightforward. This is kind of the main gist of what we'd like to do. We're proposing a 3,800 square foot drive-through Hot Rise Restaurant Cafe on-site. We're also proposing an 800 square foot freezer. We have been working with Dennis Stevens' office for about the last year or so. As you all know, costs have gone through the roof. For everybody. So originally, when William came to me, one of the things they had during COVID issues was supply and demand. Getting the product at a reasonable price, being able to keep it onsite at a reasonable price to then sell it back out. So his initial goal was to have one 5,000 square foot building that housed everything beautifully. The first numbers that came back from Dennis Stevens wasn't so pretty on that there. So we've downsized a little bit so that he does what his business is. And this is very similar to Wendy's and stuff like that, a lot of them do this, they do the outside freezer, it's just it's more conducive to cost-wise from there. This plan here, you'll notice, again, we got rid of the two curb cuts. Original design had a right turnout down here. I was really trying to work that through, but from a grading standpoint, the site actually drops about three or four feet from where you drive into the original Hot Rise down to that house. So I was having a lot of grade changes to try and get the drainage to actually get down to that catch base. And then I think when you look at the traffic backup and stuff like that, the aerial photos that I've looked at, this entrance that's existing right now, while it doesn't function as a great in-and-out right now because it's kind of a wide open and nobody can really see, I talked to him, I said, listen, if we can really make this what it should be, define it, put the center island in it, have a designated left turn, a designated right turn, so that if there are backups, stuff like that, people don't have to wait, they can kind of get in and out. And this is about 1,000 feet from that intersection, which we all know. So if you take a 20-foot car, they're getting about that now, we used to do 16 and a half, 17, but about 20 now, you have backup about 50 cars. Now I do know Pete in my office lives across the street at the apartment, the apartment's there now, and it does back up occasionally past those 50 probably. But, you know, my clients close at two o'clock. It's more the morning trip that he's taking, so he's taking the people that are coming by him and pulling them off the road to come into his site and then back. So, you know, we felt that getting rid of the curb cuts, not having a right turnout, even though after you leave the drive-through, you have to circle back through the site, we really cleaned up the front of the site to be 24-foot lane, 24-foot aisle now. And we pulled the pavement back in the front here, it was kind of all the way up to these trees that he has existing out there now. So again, really try to define where you're supposed to go, what you're doing when you come to the site, clean it up, make it a lot more easier. We did submit a traffic analysis to the town. The town has come back and said we'd like a full traffic study. I guess I would just like a little bit of input because again, we're closed at two o'clock. What, what are we trying to get out of the traffic study? I think we know that there's traffic backed up on this road here. This client's not going to trigger a center turn lane like the residential apartments did with all their units that are there. A D cell lane coming into the site, you know, for the vehicles there, it doesn't really do a lot. So while I'm sure the DOT may ask for something as well, I'm not sure, we've submitted this to them, we assumed it would be enough for them, but we'll wait to get back there. So I guess I just kind of wanted a little bit of input because quite honestly, it's spending probably 10 or 15 grand and the numbers are going to tell you what we told you, they're just not going to tell you how many cars are on the road right now with a tube that goes down. But again, just questions or comments that I'd like to hear, we're here tonight to kind of take that in and then we'll address them and come back to the board from there. The next sheet is our grading and drainage. These are probably our hardest sheets to produce, these are the most important to produce. As I said before, we had to work with some grading issues to get an underground infiltration system in here. The test pits weren't as great as we thought, they were good, but they were sand down to 300, 400 feet. So we had to raise the site up, which actually worked up pretty well. The site was, the site for the new Hot Rise will be about a half a foot higher than the existing, so to look nice from the road, won't be in a hole from the other one and stuff like that. So at the end of the day, by getting rid of the curb cut down and dropping the site and raising it up a little, I think we're going to have a much prettier site that you're going to see as you go by. And you'll see later on the landscaping and stuff like that, what I mean by that. We did, again, put in closed drainage system with catch basins in the back, they pick it up, bring it to the system in the front. We have a couple of catch basins back here, they're bringing up front. We're bringing sewer from the existing sewer manhole that's out there, we're putting in a grease trap, running it to the building. We're proposing underground electric and then water and gas to the site. The utility plan is just that, what I said, it's pretty clean, we got water coming in off of the main road. We are working with Merrimack Village District for the water. I'm trying to set up a meeting with them just to finalize the sizing and fire suppressions and stuff like that. And again, the underground electric will come down and through the site and out. These are my favorite plans because this is all what anybody sees at the end of the day, would be the landscape plan. Romi of Terrain used to work for us, I think she's a wonderful landscape architect, she laid this out for us. We went with a landscape buffer along the southern property line, pretty substantial. And then again, in the front, I don't think you see this level of landscaping, some people they do them themselves and ask for the waivers and stuff like that. So the nice thing is with these plans here, she's fully gone with the whole site, detailed it. The only thing I want to bring to the board's attention, I kind of wanted to work, talk to Casey probably later on, not tonight, but later on, and Robert. We propose, so we've got this internal courtyard here. These trees don't count towards what we need for landscaping onsite. They're kind of extra and I felt like he's had such a neat vision and it seems to be growing that Romi was already doing it and I've kind of wanted to give him something, what his vision could be 10 years out if he's successful and stuff like that. So I put a no in the plan that that stuff wouldn't be required until a CO. However, I think it's causing problems with parking clogs and things like that and I don't want to get into that with them. So I think we're going to remove that and just give him the plan to say, here's what you can implement in the middle, we'll leave it as a grass area for now. Again, the costs are, he's starting to get his site numbers and stuff like that. And just everything's higher than what I'm sure he originally started and wanted to do. So while the landscaping in the front, the sides, around, the islands, all that, yes. But I just, like I said, I think before we come back next time, Casey and myself might have a meeting, we might come up with a possible way to do that or show it on a plan a little differently there. But again, it's not clogs that we need for what's out there today. Lighting, again, we do everything with the dark star, dark sky. We've got three different types of light, we've got wall packs here and then we've got two different parking lot lights, kind of went with a little different, we didn't do the shoe horn, stuff like that, we did something nice looking down onto the site again. He's just done such a good job and has the vision, it's nice to see. The erosion control, that's not much there, this just, we show the perimeter silt fence around the site to ensure it's constructed correctly. We did propose to keep the construction entrance down near where the house is for now. He's still going to be open to an extent, so we're going to have to do kind of a construction plan for his contract and when they get to that level there. So we thought it made sense to leave that open there for the entrance for now. Again, we'll take comment and feedback from town staff. Next two sheets, we did site distance at the new location. And I say new location, improved location, still the same location, it's just pulled in substantially from the width that it was before and stuff like that. We have the 400 feet for DOT. The next sheet just outlines the drainage and catch basins, all our crossings and stuff like that, some will have to dive under, some will dive over based on it. And then the last few sheets are just the proposed details for the site itself. One thing I hadn't included in the first submittal was the rendering. We have one from the front now, I would assume, we probably have to add a little more detail to it. But he's going, this is the vision he's going for with it. It's kind of similar to what you're seeing restaurants doing now with the architectural on the outside. We'll have the main entrance at this location here. We'd have a drive-through, as we said, on the far side here, you can see it's not wall packs, there are nice lights in the front. So a very nice, clean, modern look for the Hot Rise. That's what I have for plans and presentations, I've got drainage numbers, you know, obviously the two, the 10, the 25, 50, we've reduced the flow there. We have gotten a review from CIA, not CLD, Foson O'Neill. I have not gone through that yet, we will go through that over the next three or four weeks as we move to the next phase of this project here. But that's kind of an overview and I'll take any comments or questions that staff or board have.
Thank you, Matt, thank you for the presentation and I think it's pretty interesting development considering how popular the Hot Rise is to kind of expand it and provide some more room. I wanted to know, I have a couple of questions about the courtyard area that you described and the potential deferring that landscaping or that, I guess it looks like there's a couple picnic tables or something that are going to potentially be part of that vision.
Yeah, a little, a couple benches she just threw in there for seating. We were thinking more employees and stuff like that is what the vision was originally?
I would, so I think that adds a lot of character to the site to have that little courtyard landscaped. And even if there was a little bit of outdoor seating out there, I think that would be a nice addition that people would certainly want to use. Is that, you mentioned that it affects your parking calculations, is that because of seating out there or what?
One of the comments said that we'd have to take in the seating for parking calculations.
Okay.
And right now I'm at exactly what I got and I have pushed everywhere I can on this.
Sure, I understood. As a planning board member, I would have no resistance to a parking waiver as a trade-off to get that courtyard, you know, done in the first effort to have it, because I really think that outdoor seating has added so much to restaurants everywhere that you see it and it's really sought after, especially when, as the weather turns better and it adds so much character to the site. Obviously, can't make you do that, but I'd certainly help with the planning board's review of the process to make it as easy as possible to try to do that. And I don't know whether it would add a need for two or three spaces and that would be the extent of a waiver, but I'd be amenable to that. Obviously, I'm only one vote, other board members would have to weigh in. On the staff's memo, they talk about having elevations of the rear and side views, any resistance to trying to provide that?
We can get that, right? The side and rear from Dennis, he probably already has them, right? We just haven't finalized them yet?
I think he's in the process of working with retaining an architect, so if he's working.
I'll reach out to Dennis on that comment, I would believe so, yes. At some point, we're going to need it for building permit anyway, so.
The staff mentioned having Foson O'Neill review that and I don't know specifically how Foson O'Neill reviews elevations, but if that's part of what we would normally do, I'd want to make sure we're continuing to do that. Are you going to have air conditioners or utilities on the roof?
I don't think we've got to that level yet, right?
Yeah, we'll have to ask.
I'll have to get back to you on that, Bob.
I think our usual approach to that is to ask that it be screened from view in some way by a parapet wall or some construction or feature of the roof so that if there's an air conditioner up there or anything, air handlers, so they're not visible from the ground. And so keep that in mind, is there going to be, I'm sure there is a dumpster, where is it going to be on the property?
We showed it up here in this corner.
In the back corner, okay. And I see you've got a full bypass lane on the drive-through, so.
Yes, we do.
I don't know how many cars you can stack in that drive-through, but it's a lot, a lot more than whatever our requirements are.
Yeah, I mean, we did a lot of different layouts on this here to get this in here and this, to me, just gave, gets everybody off the road, gets them away from everything, yeah.
Yeah, going all the way around the building like that. Will you have any challenges with the drive-through lane interfering with the parking spaces in that back?
So staff brought up concern about these spaces here that don't technically meet. We just talked earlier, our trade-back would be that we'd label these as employee parking only if that would work for staff, but we wanted to have a conversation with staff on that.
What does the staff say, it doesn't meet?
It has to be an 18-foot, so it's two 12-foot lanes, 24 feet wide. But if it's only a one-way, it has to be 18 feet, so I got 12. So I'd need to push the parking spaces six feet towards the butter buffer there. I like the way 24 feet is and 90% of the employees get there before people do and they leave after you guys go use it. So if staff and that, and if it's a waiver, I'll work with them, but if they're willing, that's one thing we were going to.
So the travel lane has to be wider?
So right here, this travel lane right here has to be 18 feet right here.
And it's not, but it's a one-way?
Yes, it's 12 and 12.
Certainly, okay. And you'd have to go six feet further to make it?
Which if you think about it, the lane that's on the side here is 24 feet wide right here and you have parking spaces backing up either side and you're only supposed to back up the 12 feet into your lane and go, so there's.
Sure. What's the length of your parking spaces?
18 and a half.
18 and a half.
Oh, well, not those ones there, those ones are 20, when they're angled, they're 23, 23 feet, I think it says right there.
Okay, so that's a long way, a full-size pickup truck, a long bed is 20 feet.
Yep.
And so it gives you some room there, okay, I understand that issue. What was the other thing? Oh, the staff had commented on your parking review, full versus kind of a limited and you touched on it a little bit. You want to elaborate a little bit on exactly what your approach is on the parking, not parking, traffic, I'm sorry, traffic analysis? And, and I understand the cost that's associated with a full review, I just want to understand more about what we would gain or not gain from having a full review.
So we had prepared a traffic impact letter here based on what the town and stuff like that, that your requirements have. In that there, we go through and we took a look at what's the base, what's the main trips on Daniel Webster Highway. So on page three of our report, there are page four of the report. We have a little caveat that says Daniel Webster Highway trips are 14,946 is what your ticker is right there at that location. So we took a look at that, so a traffic engineer is going to use that in his numbers when he looks at how we're impacting that road. Then the traffic engineer will take, if you're asking for a full study, lay down tubes for, I would assume, just the morning peak and maybe a Saturday, but from what I'm hearing from William, Saturday's not busy on that road, I don't drive it on Saturdays, I wouldn't know. So to me, I think the only trips are the morning trip, that we'd lay a tube down and get counters for who's making turns, which directions on some of these side streets. Then they would take the trip generation, the exact same ones that we gave you here in the back, the strip plaza, the basketball with the drive-through, and they'll run the same numbers that we did here and then they'll take our number of 170 vehicles per hour, just taking an example here, if we take the AM peak on our report, there was for the restaurant, there was about 170 vehicles per hour for that restaurant, the 3,800 square feet. So we've given all the numbers of what they are, they'll take those and put that into the trip generation to see what the level of the turning will be coming out of the site. If it's a level A, B, C, D, E, F, I think we know and sometimes it's going to be an F and other times it's going to be an A and sometimes it's going to be a B, I mean, it's going to fluctuate between six in the morning until two in the afternoon. So they'll look at what those delays are for the morning peak, unless you pick another one too, but they'll look at that from seven to nine. So you're just, they're going to have the same, these numbers aren't going to change what we're generating. The traffic study is just going to tell you what are the delays for people getting out. The other thing a traffic engineer would look at was whether or not it trips any warrant articles, meaning a signal. I think we're pretty clear that if 256 units across the street doesn't trip a signal, I'm not tripping it here where I'm adding this there. So it's tripping a signal, tripping a center turn lane or a bypass or a D cell lane coming in. Now, if those are your concerns too, I can look at those types of things based on, what they do is they take this 14,946 trips and whether or not, how hard it is for you to take that left into the site, how long are you going to wait to take the left into the site? That's the big, I mean, I think we all know, that's the question here in the morning. If somebody's coming from the center of town and they're coming up to it here, is there going to be a gap to get in there? I don't know how it functions, you guys live it, breathe it, I'm sure when somebody's sitting there, they let some, one or two down, lets the person go and gets into the site. There wouldn't be enough people, unless you're telling me there's five or six people doing that, I just don't see that because I, listening to him, he's telling me most of the traffic's coming to the highway, just like Dunkin' Donuts will tell you all the day long, we pick up the traffic that's going by. So unless there was five or six or eight people that you feel are coming from the center of town and are going to create a queue there, that's the only thing, and then would need a bypass lane to get around. That's the only thing that I could see from a traffic standpoint that can be generated out of this. And again, the DOT is going to review all this. And the DOT may come back and say, we want to see what, if there needs to be a bypass lane, we want to see if there's going to be that, we want to see if there's going to be this. This is all in the DOT's hands. So they may come back and ask for the exact same study the staff's asking for. I don't know that yet, it could be two months before I know that, the way they are working these days with getting stuff back to you. So that's kind of where I'm at is, and for me to tell another traffic engineer, because we'd hire somebody else to do the study, what specific concerns are, I mean, I saw a head shaking the left turn and I think we all knew that, you know, are there other things that I don't know that I don't live in this area? So that's where we're at with the traffic, Mr. Chairman.
So I can offer my own observations of turning, I drive by there every morning, usually around 8:15, sometimes maybe earlier than that, early as seven, but not usually later than that. And I wouldn't say every single day, but very frequently, there's one car trying to turn left and it, you know, a couple cars back up and then they make their turn and life goes on. I hardly ever see two people trying to go in at the same time, in a time that I pass by. There usually are two or three cars leaving, but the delay departing is sort of a situation for your client to manage in their parking lot, not a public roadway issue.
Which is why we laid it out the way we did.
And, and so I'm sure that there are more people coming in at a different time than I go there because, you know, I just have one snapshot in time. But is there ever three cars trying to turn left at the same time? I've never seen that, maybe other people have. And usually when there's one there, sometimes people are trying to shimmy around the outside of it and put one wheel on the dirt, which is a little potholed. But usually people, you wait there for a second and within four or five cars, there's a chance to get through and people do. That's my observation, I don't know if other people have had different ones. With that in mind, I do know what you're saying about what a traffic study would produce for us for information is, do we need a turn lane? Do we, I need a traffic light, obviously not. And, you know, counting the number of trips, I do agree, I think something you mentioned in your initial discussion of the traffic is that you're going to be probably attracting customers that were already on DW going by the site in the first place and they stop on their way to something else and probably not generated trips that came only for this in the peak hour.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's, mine is just telling me what the IT says it's going to generate and that traffic study would say, okay, out of these 170 that you say are going to And that traffic study would say, okay, out of these hundred and seventy that you say are gonna generate, a hundred and sixty of them were bypassed. That were just being picked up. That's what the traffic engineer is gonna make assumptions on and stuff like that. I did not, I do not make those. I just give you straight. Hundred and seventy vehicles coming in the morning, well, a hundred and seventy total trips, so eighty coming in, eighty-five coming in, eighty-five coming out. So yes, a traffic study and it would also tell you exactly between seven and nine, how many people took that left turn lane.
My initial impression is to be amenable to not requiring a full study, but based on the cost and what you would gain from it. But I could, if other board members feel differently and wanted to have that conversation, I'm amenable to being persuaded otherwise. Those are the comments that I have about the thing. Overall, I think it's a really exciting development. I think the landscape that you're putting out by the road is very nice. I think changing the way the parking lot's laid out. Cuz as you mentioned, once you get in it, the pavement is kind of pulled back and it's kind of open once you get in there and and creating a flow will be very nice. I think that operating the existing businesses at the same time you're doing construction will be challenged, but that's not news. That's on every site. So I think it is, there there's so few residential properties on Daniel Webster Highway left. And I don't know if I have nostalgia for them or not, but it'll be one less than, and and there's, they'll never return, but I guess it is what it is. Anybody else have comments, Barbara?
So my take on the traffic study is we've been wanting a full traffic study at other properties. Along the DW and we haven't had them. Of all of the businesses that have gone in there in the last year, this is the one I don't worry about. At all. So that's not my concern as far as having a full traffic study versus the abbreviated version.
Just so the board hears it and anybody watching and stuff like that, we're not circumventing it. We have to get a DOT permit from the DOT. So I mean, if they come back and say they want it, I, they, we have to do it. So we're just saying, can we leave it in their hands a little bit, I guess is what I'm asking.
But I'd say if they asked for one, then we'd want it in our file, but.
But I do have a couple of other questions. So you know, I see on your grid, on your diagrams that the plates. That there is a easement to the north for that back property. And the where you are having your proposed common space, that has also been used as a pass through to get to that back lot. Do they know it back there that the traffic will be limited to only the north side?
I guess my question is what, when you say they, so right now on the existing conditions plan here. They've got an easement that goes down like this and comes up here.
Yes.
So this is their easement, so this is, you're saying they come through here now?
Oh, yeah, there's traffic that goes through there all the time.
I mean, they don't have an easement for that.
Yeah, okay, I'm just saying, you might wanna make sure they know.
I'm sure he'll go talk to, I mean, he's not a, not.
You might, well, just wanna mention it to them so they're not surprised.
Why don't we see cars going that way because they don't know where the other building is? You know, because it's it's way in the back and they always stop where we are and then looking for the the offices. That is situated in the back.
Right, and for some reason, that left side, that north side is not as apparent as going through the south side. I don't know why, but it just is. My other question was because I know.
Let me just say one thing, Barbara, just seeing on the site plan, we've cleaned up this now with curbing and stuff like that to make it a more, you know. It's not the side of a building now, it's gonna be in, we'll probably have a sign for drive through and stuff like that or something, so. Yeah, it'll be a little more defined.
Okay, so the only other concern I had was again, getting back to those parking spaces on the other side of the driveway, of the drive through. I know some of your clients that go there sometimes have to leave very quickly, i.e. Merrimack Police. Because they love your coffee. So I just wanna make sure that whatever emergency vehicles happen to be going through the drive through. That they can get out and escape quickly. So is, do you think there's enough room through there?
Oh, wait a minute, so we, from a drive through and a bypass, there are two twelve, two twelve foot lanes. So we meet all that.
Okay, so we can get those.
Absolutely, no, no, no.
You won't have a fire truck through there, but you might have an ambulance, so.
Yes, yes, that all can get through as you guys have asked on other applicants and stuff like that. I made sure he knew that that. This is just for the cars backing out of the space, having more room, yes. Good question.
Yeah, that was the only concern I I really had on that corner there. It's getting those guys through there, guys and gals. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Matt, can you explain more about whatever that building is in the back that people access through your property, through the easement?
I'm understanding it's an office building.
Yeah, it's a property management company.
Okay, didn't even know it was there. And that's their regular accesses to come through your property? They don't have any other roads? Interesting.
Yeah, it's. Little back lot. That was probably down the eighties.
And if they went on the wrong side of the building, they still gotta go back around to that other easement cuz there isn't any.
No, this doesn't connect through. Yeah, no, that doesn't connect through. Yeah, they, they, you know, they probably tried if you, they built cars, trucks.
You want to get a chance. Well, you put a few trees and some benches there like I asked and then there will be people go there.
We got curbing in front now too, yeah, they're not getting up over it anyway.
Turn your microphone on, Maureen, please.
Can you hear it now? Let me give you another thank you. Thank you for really not asking for for waiver after waiver after waiver. My thoughts in regards to, so my my son loves going here. And I know one of the reasons why he likes going there cuz when he walks in there, everybody knows his name, right? So it's it's kind of like a a familiar place like that as well. I'm gonna be honest to, one of the reasons why I don't go there a lot. Is because it is always so busy and people are, so my 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 guess estimate would be. That you are going to have an increase in business, including myself, if you're able to kind of go in and out of. Of the drive, drive through, cuz I think like what Bob said, I go by there often and I will see one to two cars maybe. People, including myself, go around. But if they, if those cars weren't there, I would quickly go in there, right? Especially if there was a drive through. When you have kids and stuff like that, so grandkids, it's a lot easier too. So and and I guess my thought, and I don't know, I'm I'm gonna put this to Bob, I guess. So so we've had, you know, all of this construction going all the way down. Why and how and not just this project, but putting in a a middle lane like we have down there, Mr. G's for all of this. Because I feel like this is every, there's just so much business down here right now. So I don't know if that's possible, but other than that, I think it's really exciting. And I really hope that your business grows and flourishes, so thank you.
In terms of the choices about a middle lane, there's a lot of actors involved in a choice or decision like that. And I think Barbara pointed out to us that it's the cemetery a little bit further down. No, it's on the, yeah, it's on the cemetery where the urban compact.
Right, the urban compact starts at the cemetery and that's where the sign is, heading south until you get to Greeley Street. So it's from Greeley Street to Bedford, where the urban compact is, which is what the town is responsible for. Anything on either side is DOT.
Yeah, the detail of that is obviously DW Highway is Route Three, which is a state road. And the state by this thing called an urban compact allows the city or Merrimack, the town, to manage a portion of it. Because it's critical to the middle part of our town. So from Bedford Road roughly a little bit north of it down to the Common Man. Merrimack controls and north and south, the state controls. This part would be a state controlled part, so probably, first of all, it would be part of their decision. The second is as you get to widening roads, especially near things like cemeteries where you would have to move things back away from the road. It's very difficult to acquire the property that you would need to try to add, you know, another twelve foot bit of pavement length. Another element of that is sometimes in in certain circumstances with traffic controls. Adding a middle lane doesn't have the calming effect that you think it will. It actually makes it much more complicated. That's why a lot of one oh one A in Nashua has the barriers where you can't turn left through most of it. And you gotta go down and do the little jug handle things to turn around, because that's what actually makes the traffic. It is frustrating as it is to sort of go a mile down the road to make a U-turn to come back to go to the whatever. That actually makes the traffic flow better and the middle lane thing makes it worse, sometimes.
It's a balance out there. I mean, you, there's pieces up and down here, we're doing it, but like Bob just said. There's a backup somewhere in the center lanes open, people shoot down it for, you know, half a mile and stuff like that. So there is calming measures by having it split up a little bit and stuff like that. Conqueror's been dealing with with their Loudoun Road, trying to figure out how to get that fixed. And they thought of a three lane and they went away with that and it's, so there's advantage in places and so you you just gotta look at each kind of case as you come across.
But at any rate, it would never be one applicant's ability to do much more than the width of their property. Or the turning lane to get into their driveway. So will will there ever be a point where all of that section is got a third lane? Or a middle lane or turning lane? I wouldn't rule it out, but I think it's pretty unlikely to do, so. Yeah, but that's all just my opinion on things. Other comments, Nelson, you got some?
Starting with the traffic because that's been our most. Starting with the traffic because that's been our most recent discussion here. I have a little concern for how the traffic flow is expected to work inside the site, first of all. When you come in the on the right hand side of the entrance off of Route Three. Are you expecting traffic to turn then left or you're allowing them to turn left? Or do they have to go all the way around the building to get to those parking spaces on the other side?
Nope, everything would, you're able to come in and take a left turn and access anything in front here cuz we've got a chiropracting office here and stuff like that in the existing building. Plus everything in front of the shop here. Again, I really, I know how much is going on in here, so I tried to split everything as best I could. I don't think we put a little sign, but I think there should be a little sign here that says drive through this direction. So if you're going to the drive through, you're just coming up back in here and you're out. If you're coming to use the facility, you're here. If you're employees, you're back in here and on the side here. So I really tried to split all three uses now.
That will be made clear then on the site somewhere. I don't see any.
Put arrows in front there, yep, I put them in the back and not, yep, yep, you got me.
I think the number of spaces around the back is probably more than just employees. So I would wanna make sure there's some indication to the public that there's additional parking in the rear or something. Unless unless that is gonna be completely used by employees.
I don't think they have that many employees.
It's a lot. Anyway, Nelson, continue.
Okay, the then I'll take my list here in order. The the other concern with traffic is to take account of the buildings that aren't yet built. But approved, just north of here as part of the Flatley Development. There's two large apartment buildings and I don't know if those are in your numbers, Matt, that you gave us.
So again, I did not do, we did an analysis on what the site generates specifically based on the IT. A traffic study would take other sites and build a whole model and show you what this here could possibly impact those models. So those guys just did two new buildings, forty-eight units each one. We're talking a thirty-eight hundred square foot restaurant that's already on site, that's gonna be, yes, growing, we're hoping. But you're utilizing most of the traffic that in businesses that are there. So we're not, we're probably gonna impact the road by, we said four point four percent in our in our letter. Okay, so that's kind of, that's, if you take everything and build, yes, you're gonna find out how far that backup on Bedford Road becomes and stuff like that. My point is, I don't know what that changes our use, are you denying us based on that? Like, the numbers are gonna come out bad, period. You know it backs up.
Come out worse than you're predicting.
Are you gonna deny us based on that? Okay, I guess you could, but there, there's nothing we could do to fix that. We're not gonna do offsite and the cost where he's at to try and do this right now. It's, he's been here for twenty years and seen this growth. I'm sorry, I think there has to be a little with existing businesses that have grown up and put up with it to be able to move forward. As long as they're not impact, again, this has to go to DOT, so I'm not trying to get around some DOT still gotta say it's safe and everything else on the sun. I'm just saying to build a whole model that's gonna tell you what we all know, I don't know what's coming out of it. That's all I'm saying.
The other thing I wanted to comment on was the rendering of the building is not satisfactory to me. I would like to see what the sides of the building look like and I would like to see it look more like a building. You don't see any parking, you don't see any landscaping. The the renderings are simplistic, let's say.
So I I agree with you, Nelson, that sometimes we get the color sort of perspectives, which is different than an elevation. And I I wouldn't mind seeing perspectives on lots of buildings that we present. And I'm okay asking for it on this one, I just, purely speaking, an elevation is what's in front of you though. The, an elevation wouldn't have the trees or the parking or whatever shown, it's just the slab of the building. But a rendering or even a perspective is valuable and and would show those things. I don't know what it takes to get that kind of rendering.
Used to be eight hundred dollars from an artist that did it that I know, now he's about two to twenty-five hundred dollars cuz it's it's artwork, it's pretty wild. I mean, I I was gonna do the sides of the building and show you the color of them and stuff like that. I was gonna work with Dennis Stevens, add a full rendering view of it there. Let let me talk to Dennis Stevens and see what I can get to you and then see what your comments are from there.
Some of the ones that we get do seem to be generated out of whatever the graphics program is that the arc, the designer, the engineers are using. And it's not the art that.
I would agree if Dennis Stevens has an architect. He said Dennis Stevens was doing most of this before and I didn't realize he was reaching out to an architect. So if he has an architect, they probably could get me something. So I'm, I'll come back with something. I hear the concerns from the board.
Okay, thank you. The the proposed common space, this is the place where the picnic tables go and all of that. What is your, what is your plan saying? I mean, if you wanna do the picnic tables there, they need to show on the plan or they should. That the use of that, if it's gonna be different than a slab, should be shown on the plan. You were kind of ambivalent about it.
Basically what happened, this was envisioned just as a grass space between the two buildings. Terrain design went a little overboard and she put a nice plan together. I thought it made sense to leave it on the plan cuz it looked good, but I think it's gonna cause more. Concerns with traffic than that to come out. It was just she threw in a couple benches, it looks like. And just, nothing from what, we didn't tell her to do this. She just kind of thought a neat area in the middle and put this together.
What are you telling us you're gonna do? That's what I'm.
So in the note here, in the note here, I had said, the proposed landscape area is not required per the town regulations. It'll be installed at the owner's discretion, meaning it's not part of his CO moving in. He could put it in over ten years, he could put it over two years. That's what I was at. It sounds like it's causing more and I think I'm just gonna say it's a green space, it's grass. And then he wants to do something, he can landscape his site. Like he could, he could put trees in there.
You want with the site, I just wanna know what it is so that when you.
The vision here was a sidewalk between the two parcels with two benches on either side to sit outside and, you know, take your your smoke break. I don't have smoke breaks anymore, but your phone breaks or whatever people do, yes, yes. That's what we were asking to, it wasn't outside seating for the restaurant, if that's where you're going, no.
Wanted to be outside seating.
I know, that's what you were asking. I heard that too, so me and William are gonna talk after this meeting cuz it's caused a lot there. We'll come back to the next meeting with exactly what we're gonna tell you there.
Okay, that's what I.
That's what we're gonna do, yep.
No one will approve what you want.
I got it.
Okay.
I got it.
And and I wanted to mention that the existing building has outdoor seating, which doesn't show here, but it's okay. But that.
On the walkway, so.
There's there's tables out there, right? Yeah, people sit there, it's nice, nice in the morning, the sun shines in and the winter and.
I'll take a look at that.
All of that, okay. I couldn't find, Matt, I couldn't find the plan with the sewer line on it and I wasn't sure.
That would be one back from the landscaping.
Five of sixteen.
Five of sixteen. So it's in the lower right hand corner. It's sewer that comes up from near the residential units there. And feeds the existing building that's out there. And feeds the existing building that's out there. Do you see the one manhole at the low right, the entrance? There'll be two manholes in the entrance now.
Oh, the, the one line with the S?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
And then it heads towards a building and the grease traps there.
Yep, okay, I got it now. I couldn't find it.
Yep, that's all right.
And, and that's the only plan it shows on, by the way.
Yep, yes.
But, okay, I, is the, the, does the sewer go north from here on that side of the road?
Yes.
Does it go beyond the church or does it go to the church or?
I'm going to have a meeting with, uh, Mike Gorm on another project here next week. I'll probably ask where, I don't have the answer where it goes. I was surprised to find it in this location here because it's not in the road and stuff like that. So I, I thought he was on septic at one point, you know, so, yeah.
He was on septic?
No, I thought it was, but anyway, this is like a private line that they've got that goes down and around. Do you know exactly where crosses? No, I'll, I'll get that answer.
Okay, and does it service the back, the, the, the building in back too?
No, not the back, uh, they're on.
Septic.
They're on septic.
They're on septic, okay. So this site has it, but I don't know if that's the end or not. I was kind of curious about that and I couldn't find the information here.
Other questions?
Yes, more. Yeah, I just let them write down, I want to. Okay, the landscaping plan, um, I couldn't find the identification of the plant. What page is that?
Those six of sixteen?
Six?
Yep, the landscape plan.
Six, it's got all these symbols for different kinds of plantings, but I don't see the code breaker as to tell me what they are.
So, um, right down just to the left of the title block there, there's a planting schedule?
Oh yes, I see this.
Okay, and then it says size is the first one? Well, first one is the type, common name, name, then it's size, and then it says label next to it? That label, you go down that line and you'll see a B N, a C P, an L S, an M S, N S, Q P. And then those should all line up with the, uh, L S is the M P's, yep, all that are on the plans.
Well, a lot of them don't have, uh, names on them, don't have those letters on them.
Uh, if they don't, there would be, there'd be a line that's continuing through like a group of three or four and stuff like that. Like you've got the twenty, yeah, like, I could see what you're saying. So like in the front there, it says there's twenty I G's. It only points to one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah.
Then there's another five, ten, twenty, so that, so I could, I could add another label to it, that's fine.
Okay, just clarify.
Yep, yep.
I just.
I see what you're saying.
Done. Now this has, um, this is the finished landscaping plan and it shows. A full line of trees and shrubbery along the front, along route three. And, uh, you had mentioned about leaving a gap in here of some kind. I, I didn't get quite whether that was just during construction or.
Oh, 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 yeah. Um, so we're just proposing like where you just saw those I G's, those five. We're just proposing during construction that the trucks would come in that, we're not going to put the landscaping until the end and curb it and do all that stuff there. So I was just saying that we would have a, a temporary construction entrance there until it was finished.
But it, but the finished product is what you've shown here.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the finished product would be what we've got on the grading plans, um, and the landscaping plans and stuff like that. There'll be a slope. You know, the existing road out there is, um, about two thirteen and then you got two fourteen, two sixteen. So we climb up from there and you can see the contours on sheet four of six. So, yeah, no, 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 there, there'd be a curbing in the front, the whole nine yards.
Okay, so that.
Just during construction.
I just wanted to clarify that because you'd made a comment.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, just during construction because trying to separate the site so we can still stay open.
Okay, and you know you got to go to the D O T for your curb cut.
We've already submitted it to the D O T, yes.
So that, that's submitted and working on it.
Yep.
And, um, let me see here, priority, yeah, uh, uh, we mentioned it slightly. That the, uh, the property in the back is, has got to be made aware of this. Ja, these changes, you know, they, this is affects, I guess it affects their, or maybe it doesn't affect. Their access at all in any way.
Matt, did they get a butter notification? They got a butter notification, right?
They would get a butter notification.
Yeah.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, reach, I mean, I think William's probably going to go talk with them anyway afterwards, but this is just an access easement and we have not changed. All we're doing is cleaning up the entrance to make it safer. So from a D O T standpoint, that, that they can't.
The bag, they just kind of wait that we get the, a project finished, so, uh, we'll have a sign for them. For their, uh, um, uh, client to know where they are exactly.
Yeah, I just wanted them not to be surprised someday to find the, their road torn up in their entrance.
Right, we should have a conversation about that.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time.
Thank you Nelson. Um, Matt, I noticed while Nelson was asking his questions, the landscape area in the middle that is maybe in or maybe not. Um, the, the line style that's used to delineate that circle.
Yep.
Is also labeled as a tree line in the legend.
Yeah, Mitch did that. He's, uh, he's my new kid, six months now, in school there. He had, really good at making plans look clean, but yeah.
Hey, if that was the only thing that you got to criticize on this, he's doing all right.
I'd agree. Although he just took a two-week vacation after working for six months. Comes back tomorrow. Who does that?
Hi there, one, just a couple of things for you. Um, you, you did a nice job explaining your whole site. Uh, early in your explanation, you were talking about how you were considering keeping the curb cut to the south end for access out on the D W highway. And you changed your mind, I believe it was for grading purposes, is that right?
Yes.
I'm a little concerned on not necessarily traffic, but circulation in and around the site. So as, I mean, I, I would expect that the, the drive-through will be very popular. And as you try to exit the site coming out of the drive-through. Your left or right turn lane to get out onto D W highway are only ten feet wide. I could envision that that becomes very challenging to try to exit the site. Um, just from a turn radius standpoint, from potential queuing and then the, um, you know, the parking spaces in front of the buildings. Would the, keeping the south exit as a right turn exit, would that help ease that? Um, that volume at that, at that main entrance exit? And would it give the emergency personnel and other means of access not have to navigate potential queuing in the, within the site?
So originally he really wanted the turn lane out. Um, if you take a look at sheet three of sixteen or so, you'll notice that just, and actually across the property line. Is the neighboring budding driveway as well there.
Yep.
Um, and then we had across the street, the Hilton Drive, and we were off-center of that. So I had like three constraints that were coming in there. And then, like I said, the contour there on the grading plan is at two twelve over here. This catch basin rim is at two thirteen eleven with an invert out at two oh nine forty-nine. I couldn't get out to this two oh nine six with my detention system. Because catch basins, you gotta be down four feet, once you come into the catch basin and the system coming out. And I just didn't have any grade change to do that. So while I hear the left turn lane. I believe people look at it and say, well, it's going to alleviate some flow. You're going to have two left turn lanes on my property trying to move out. I didn't think that that was advantageous, as well as, if you'll notice in front of the existing building. We didn't put any parking on that downside there, so that if there is a queue and a backup on our property, like Chairman said, it's our responsibility. We have the ability for that to have it there, so that it was clean from that standpoint. So. This site, I would go back and forth. I mean, people like the, the left, the right turns out. They feel like, you know, there's studies out there that say it's easier for the drive-throughs, people see it, they want to. When it, when we have the traffic that we have out there, I just think this site should have all the traffic entering as far north as you can. That was just my belief on it, so that's kind of why I push it there. But I, I hear some of your concerns with the circulation. Again, we've got the twenty-four feet to get everybody around. Um, you know, yes, they're traveling about seventy-five to a hundred feet to get to the entrance out instead of going across and down. Um, it keeps the whole flow around the site kind of consistent, but I hear what you're saying.
It does, but the, having two ten-foot wide exit, uh, if you have both a left and a right turn lane. That's pretty snug. Um, and if you think about the butter to the back. Who is a property management company that might have trucks, that is their only access and exit in, into the site to drive around. And then to exit the site as well. And if there's a, a backup queue just within, you know, the circulation of your confined site. That could be problematic for, um, that business to get in and out of that site. It's kind of the way it is today though. I mean, there's no island there and it's not that full width. Um, people just kind of approach a big, open curb cut and attack it however they want.
I will, I will take a look at the whist though. I do like twelve foot over ten, uh, especially in drive-through lanes because people don't hit the curves when they turn and stuff like that. So I do agree with you tens. I was trying to keep it as tight, the width of it there, um, but right now it's, you know, even wider than that, that's there. So, um, I'll take a look at it.
And the second egress was more about your elevations of, of your, uh, drainage structures.
At the end of the day, I could not make the drainage work.
Yeah, you'd also lose a couple parking spaces if you put it. If it was just about losing two parking spaces, that wouldn't be as concerned.
Couldn't get into the catch basin that's existing out on Daniel Webster Highway, the two oh nine.
I, um, I have a different view of the appeal of the second entrance. I actually like it better with the single because. Um, well, a lot of the character of hot rises that exists today is the, the feel of going in the restaurant. And what it's like to relax there instead of a table and there's a few books around and you kind of feel like you hang out. And I think the drive-through is going to change the character of your restaurant quite a bit. Because you'll have so much traffic going through that isn't enjoying the atmosphere that you've built inside. And. By having the entrance, the way that it is, it, it, I mean, it's still obviously got a drive-through because that'll be advertised. But, um, it doesn't quite have that fast food Dunkin' Donuts feel to the drive-through. By having it deeper into the parking lot with a little bit more travel to come in and out around some landscapes and some islands and things. And, um, if it was, if you were proposing, I don't have anything against Dunkin' Donuts, it's my favorite coffee. Um, well, yours is too, but, um, I, I don't have anything, but the, the feel of that fast food place is not. From a planning standpoint, an appealing way to develop a property. And that's why I like the way that this is kind of landscaped. And it's got other businesses in there as well and the little garden area between them had that, that comfort, stay awhile kind of a feel to it.
What I have in mind, it's really like a drive-through when you are, when you come in with your car and then you look at the board and then you order. It, it's more to have option for me. And, uh, most other time, I think we're going to push like pre-order, mobile ordering. So you just come in, use it that lane just to pick up what you already ordered and paid for. So I, I don't think you will sit, uh, on that lane long.
Good, I like that.
It, it won't be like a Dunkin' Donut drive-through.
Thank you, I like that vibe. I think that's, um, really the feel that your restaurant has captured today is literally relax and stay awhile.
It, it's more for us to have the option to, uh, to have a better flow for people coming in and out. Because in the morning, like, not too many people come in and, and really sit in the restaurant to have like, uh, bacon, egg and cheese. You know, so everybody is there, the counter waiting for their food. If we can, like, better manage that morning situation by having like a, a lane. Just for pickup, it's, I think it.
I appreciate that. And I was trying to be as gentle as I could with my comment in the first place because it's not a planning board decision to tell you how to do those, those things. But, um, I guess I get older and I sort of more feel for the, you know, not fast food, um, approach to things. Yeah, anyway, um, that's, that's my view with respect to the, to the, to the driveway thing. I think also the closer you are to the light in the intersection, the less you want to be having more curb cuts and more access to that. But, yeah, at least sort of making sure that it functions properly is important. Nelson?
Just a question you reminded me of, is it your intention to keep the present hot rise the way it is?
What do you mean?
What will it be when you're done with this?
Building?
What? The existing restaurant.
The risk, your restaurant, your hot rice restaurant now.
What will be in that space?
Doesn't know yet.
I don't know yet, but it won't be, uh, it won't be a sitting, a restaurant.
Oh, oh, I'm disappointed.
Guess won't have enough parking space for it.
For more spaces, yeah.
But it could be, uh. How do I call it?
Retail something.
Without, without seating. It's, there can be food without seating. Like maybe a ice cream, you know, something like that.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so the tasks before us as a board first starts with completion and there aren't any waivers, requests. And the staff has recommended we continue so that we could look at some elevations. It seems like the staff, the planning board's inclined to see those things too. Matt, I think you already mentioned in part of your presentation, when we come back, et cetera, so it doesn't seem like you're opposed to the idea of us continuing it. Once we decide it's complete. I'm sorry, Barbara, go ahead.
Yeah, the only, um, on page two, your demo, your demo, uh, notes. Um, this house does have a septic system and a leach field. It does mention on the map, on the, on the plate about removing the vent, but.
Note says leach field and septic vent to be removed.
Yes, but it doesn't say it in the notes.
In what note?
Over on the side, removal and deman, demolition notes. It talks about.
Oh, is there something in there about?
Yeah, so I don't think we want people to be surprised if they bring a backhoe in there. Because I don't know when this house was last occupied, but it could still be a. Interesting dig there. So, and that would create a hazmat situation, so.
Other comments or questions? Okay, uh, Matt, what's the best course for you? You want to have it accepted tonight and then continued or continued before acceptance?
I think acceptance, if there's a butters that would like to speak that came out, it'd be wonderful to hear comments if there's anything that they have too. So acceptance and that and then continue would be preference.
This, uh, a board member, um, reached a point with their review that they're willing to make a motion to accept the application as complete.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion and a second, find the application complete. If there's no further discussion on that item, I'll say, I'll, in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero to find the application complete. A lot of the information that has been presented before completion would obviously be considered part of our hearing that we had to gather all the information. Are there any butters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in and provide the board any information? Yep, come on up to a microphone and introduce yourself so we take your comment.
My name is Jim Drabo and I live at six thirty, Daniel Webster Highway.
Which way is that from this property?
So that's the south.
Okay.
Um, so I'm, I'm really happy that you moved the, the exit to the north. Originally you had it right next to my driveway. Um, I guess the only other concern, well, traffic is concern, but I guess that is what it is. Um, the dumpster location. Because that's right up against my property line.
Hang on, hang on, just his comments for now.
So, so now the, where, where the dumpster is, um, you know, I can hear the doors closing and slamming. I mean, it is, again, um, what it is. I guess, um, you know, the pickup time has been an issue. Um, I've never made it an issue with him. But, I mean, sometimes it's three, four o'clock in the morning when they pick up the dumpster. And, you know, we all, I think I've heard that before. You know, it's loud, the doors slam.
Backup alarms, the whole deal.
So, and then it's going to be the, um, the odor. Um, it's right there. My house is right there, the driveway and then the house is right. To the left of that, so, you know, that's one concern. I mean, if there's an option of, of moving it. Um, I'd like to see that. And then fencing, is there going to be some kind of fence along the property line that he's going to put in besides the landscaping? Or is it just landscaping?
We'll have to ask the applicant when they come back up.
So other than that, um, you know, again, I'm happy that they moved it north. I I'm hoping that they don't change that and and decide to go back to the original drawing. And the other thing would be um, you know, it would be nice if there was a sewer tie-in next to my property line because I'm on septic. So it would be really nice if I could tie into that sewer line.
Somehow it's going south down Daniel Webster Highway because that's where the sewer treatment plant is.
Well, I mean, I know they brought it across the road from the development across the street. And that's why he has sewer, he has the sewer. The house across the street from him does not have it because I used to own that house. That's on septic. So anyway, maybe you could change your sewer design and get a little closer to my house. Give me an easement for that.
Now you got some friends. All right.
Yeah, I guess we gotta become friends.
There you go. I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. We'll, we'll uh make sure the applicant gets a chance to respond to those. Are there any other butters? Go forward.
Hello, I'm on the butter.
Nope.
Rick Jones, uh, building official at Town of Merrimack, and I'm here.
Hang on, Rick, wait till you get to the microphone so they can catch your voice.
Okay.
Yep, Rick Jones, building official of Town of Merrimack. Um, so I just wanted to introduce myself and say that I'm I'm here and that there's anything that uh is is available for questions for me, you can ask. Um, I will uh, address the comment that you had about the septic. Uh, that would be a part of the demolition of the house and the removal of the septic, and that all has to be done in accordance to uh, state law and the requirements for removal of the material. So it's not really considered hazard, but it is has a place to go and it's just not, you know, buried in and left on site. Just wanted, I also, I'm representing kind of the fire department too, and uh, wanted to know if you had addressed the comments that uh, came from the fire department in the uh, in the addressing of the the plans in a recent review.
Thank you, Rick. Um, I don't know the status of the comments, but I do know that the staff's memo has an extraordinary number of comments in it for an application, especially a Keach Nordstrom plan. Eight pages of them or something like that. So uh, I'm sure that those things are in there, but we'll, we'll make sure that we're attending to those. And are you looking to see those resolved before approval or?
I'm looking to have whatever comments and and requests were made to be part of the plan and to be noted on the plan. Uh, especially the location of hydrants, location of the uh, fire hookup to the um, building itself. Access to this, the uh, the connection to the building. And then also the island that's in between the entrance and discharge from the property that uh, if there's any landscaping there, it's not something that will be obstructable to a fire uh, engine. And it's, if that curbing is put on an angle so that if they needed to get over it and to access it, then they could.
Okay, so the um, I'm looking at the memo from the staff and there is uh, comments from the fire department. Then it mentions the location of hydrants, install a hydrant between the two buildings after the grass area and before the parking to keep costs of piping down. Install the fire sprinkler CD corner of the building, right rear corner of new building. And the fourth comment was change the island entrance to be a drivable, low-angle curb with no plants. This will allow for large vehicles to enter without changing width in or out. Also, with no plants, there will be no obstruction to the driver planting based on the plantings you selected are five to six feet tall. And so those are listed here already as uh, potential uh, conditions of approval.
Great.
Um, and then uh, if the applicant has any resistance to those, we should have it and discuss it and all that.
All right.
Okay, awesome. Anything else? Any comments? All right, uh, then we'll close the public hearing and invite the applicant back up to respond to any of those comments that they wish to. I'm certainly interested in a little bit of detail about the dumpster in terms of knowing it it probably the dumpster area has a little fence just around that tiny square and then hours of operation and that sort of thing. So we know what backup alarms are about and those kinds of things. Because that is pretty noisy next to a residential area to have the dumpster changed fairly late at night.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that and get back to the board with some, taking a look at it. I've drawn some things up and we'll see what we can do on that. Um, as far as fencing, I think after the meeting, I think William and them should discuss. There's a existing fence, but I hear it's not in great shape. So we went with the landscaping. If it's better fencing, William, he'll, we'll work it out and we'll come back with the solution between that with those from there. Um, and yes, from the fire department, I just got the comments. Well, I didn't get them, but I haven't got a chance to. Like I said, he's been on vacation for two weeks, so. Comes back tomorrow. He's gonna have a whole list of eight pages of comments and take care of, so. And I think that was it. Like I said, we'll talk, oh, and then the sewer, the sewer can't run further south, but he would possibly be able to run a force main up to the manhole. And that's something that we'll have a discussion there if they want afterwards to.
Okay. Um, thank you for all those replies.
Excuse me, it would be interesting to know where that sewer goes.
I've already got that written because I, like I said, I'm meeting with Michael Gorham next week on another on 29 Bedford Road to see where the whole sewer in this area goes. So it's right around the corner. So I'll have it all.
Excellent, thank you. Um, will there be any marquee sign or anything along the roadway?
So that was one thing that was brought by staff and I, we haven't had the conversation, but you're gonna put up some sign. And so, yes, we've gotta take a look at that.
Kind of ground pylon sign or something?
You want to do something in front here, don't you?
Well, we can.
Yeah, so we'll put that and we'll get that back to the staff here.
I think now all the signage is on the building, but you've got a whole lot more landscaping coming in that may make it difficult to see the building signage. But um, and typically, we don't, as a planning board, take a look at the actual signage, but just to know where it's gonna be sitting, is it in a, in a right of way or a setback or anything?
Yep.
Other comments or questions? Okay, so we're complete. We did a public hearing. You don't have any waiver requests. You're gonna get us the elevations and maybe a perspective. Um, and.
And address all the comments.
Or as many as you can, at least. Um, okay, when do you want to come back?
I think you guys had said April something. I would say the second hearing in April instead of the April 2nd. I would say April, what does that put you at?
16th.
16th?
Yeah, if some of the things that you need to provide need Fussin' O'Neill's review, they need 10 days to do it.
Right.
So um, that would mean that you're basically getting the stuff submitted by the first week of April.
Right.
That'll work? I mean, it's okay with me if you end up getting a continuance, but coming back in April to do that is.
What's the, what's the next one after that, Casey?
First Tuesday and third Tuesday in May.
Yeah, so, so that'd be May 7th and May 21st.
I mean, the problem is DOT. DOT is not even responding yet.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's gonna be a long poll, DOT.
April 17?
Oh, we still need DOT.
Right.
We just, what might probably happen is again, we might ask for a continuance on April 17th because the DOT still hasn't there. So why not just say May 7th and get everything wrapped up and have a nice, clean one meeting instead of the two or three.
So is the DOT likely to change where you're gonna locate something or whatever? Because otherwise, we don't necessarily hinge on DOT approval.
Right.
If you end up with a traffic study, send us a copy. If you don't, we're okay with that.
Let's do this second one in April because Mitch, my guy comes back tomorrow and he needs some work on Thursday, Friday. So he's gonna jump right on this. So let's do the April 17th and I gotta get it to Fussin' O'Neill by the beginning of the month.
Casey, uh, in the memo, it discusses the board's consideration of a traffic study or a full one or not. And do you require any vote or action by us? Or is it basically kind of consensus as we've discussed it or?
Yeah, at this point, it can be a consensus. There doesn't necessarily need to be any kind of action per se.
Is there anybody on the board that feels motivated to ask for a full uh, traffic study on this? I don't. I mean, I don't hate the idea of eventually having the information, but this isn't the project that's generating the traffic that would drive you to want that information. Okay, then April, the second meeting in April is when? April?
7th, 16th, you said, right, Nelson?
Well, it's May.
April 16th.
Two plus 14.
Hey, we managed to avoid Election Day this year. We usually don't. Usually end up trying to have a meeting on Election Day and Lynn, Lynn can't come. Uh, is there a motion to continue to uh, April 16th with no further notice to a butters? Is there a second? Second by Nelson? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, unanimous. Sure, of course.
In the notes, there was an issue of moving the property line. Has that been established already?
Um, oh, consolidating these two properties, that would be part of the ultimate vote that we would have.
So we can wait on that.
Yeah. Um, although we have occasionally done the lot line, the the mergers and the site plan as two separate agenda items, um, but if.
This didn't get submitted as that. This is same owner. This would be a merger. I didn't do a lot line consolidation plan.
Okay, yeah, because it's a voluntary merger. They can do both if the owners both.
I wanted to make sure we didn't forget it if we needed it.
No, but thank you for that.
Yeah, that's, that can just be a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, you got to spend more time with us because you're the only thing on our agenda tonight, so.
Nice, it's been a while. I missed you guys. Well, thank you very much and uh.
I really like the project and I look forward to having the all-new and improved hot rice.
He does too.
I really wish that you could go through that easement and just hop onto the Everett Turnpike right after you pick up the bag.
I absolutely wish exit 12 had exits both directions. It would relieve so much traffic on DW Highway if if exit 12 had north and south exits. So anyway, not your issue. Okay, we got an agenda somewhere.
Thank you very much.
Planning and zoning administrators report, discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Casey, is there any planning and zoning administrators report?
Uh, yeah, just a couple items. Uh, the first being that you have nothing right now on your March 19th agenda. Staff is wondering if you would like to cancel your March 19th meeting.
When is the submission deadline for that meeting? Is it already passed?
It did pass. It was, I believe it was last week. Yeah, it was on February 27th.
All right, so the only reason to come together would be to celebrate a Tuesday? I think, yeah, let's cancel that. I I like celebrating Tuesdays with you guys. We could probably just go straight to the bar instead of coming here in the first place. Yeah, thank you, Casey, for that. What's your other item?
Just an announcement, um, that we got communication from the Office of Planning and Development uh, up at the state. Uh, and they are providing suggested amendments to our zoning ordinance for the flood hazard conservation district. Um, and this is so that we can um, stay in compliant, compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, so this is just a heads up that in the near future, you will see suggested uh, zoning ordinance amendments on uh, one of your agendas. We are thinking your April 2nd meeting is when we'll have them ready for you.
Excellent, look forward to it. Thank you for that. Um, does anybody have any questions for staff? So anyone have any other discussion uh, or possible action regarding other items of concern?
We've got minutes. Don't we have to do some minutes?
Yeah, that's the next thing on the agenda after the, if there aren't any items of concern. Doesn't seem like there are. Um, okay, uh, approval of the minutes of February 20, 2024. What's the rule of the board? Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 600 to approve the minutes.
Damn, who made that motion and who seconded that motion, please? Okay.
And Nelson seconded it?
I'm sorry, I was not paying attention.
You seconded the motion on the minutes, right?
Yes, I did.
And that, and that was all six voting yes?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you.
No, no worries. Pause, slow us down if we ever aren't being.
I can't always say who's raising their hand.
There's only one chance to catch us. Once they adjourn the meeting, there's no way of fixing it. Okay, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, we are adjourned. Um, thank you, everyone, for the work and don't forget to turn your microphones off.